Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 28th. We are at the Green Ladle and we'll call the meeting to order at 6:50 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will begin with committee member and counselor introductions and we'll start with Counselor Roy.
Mike Roy, Ward 4, City Council.
Paul Schilling, the Mayor of Lewiston.
Scott Harriman, Ward 3, City Counselor and City Council Rep to the School Committee.
Iman Ashman, Ward 5.
Craig Shopen-Tier, Ward 4, School Committee.
Elizabeth Eames, School Committee, Ward 3.
Janet Bowden, Ward 2, School Committee.
Phoenix Wellhand, Ward 1, School Committee.
Megan Parks, At Large.
Jake Langley, Superintendent.
Karen Pocat, Assistant Superintendent.
Tim Glant, City Council, Ward 7.
Susan Longchamp, Ward 2, City Counselor.
Joshua Nagin, Ward 1, City Council.
Rin Sol, Ward 5, City Council.
And rounding out the list is David Chittam, Counselor for Ward 6.
Thank you. We'll proceed with Jake's presentation.
So in the past, we've talked a little bit about some things going on with schools and some, some goals that we have and tie it back to just a discussion if you wish. This is workshop style, so it, it, it's largely based in the conversation that you all have. And we do have some slides and some graphics and things of that nature. They'll be up on the screen, but also available publicly for people who wish to, to view that. And I'm going to put it up right now. So folks on this side, I don't know if you want to position yourselves to see that a little better. I know it can be a challenge to see behind you. Before we jump in, we had a bit of a busy afternoon. I don't know if you've heard things. We had a situation at Lewiston Middle School that we're still working through the details of. So if, if I'm missing a spot or, or have a bit of a grammatical error, I apologize. The finishing touches were to be put on in the window that I was at the middle school trying to sort through some, some things. So I apologize in advance. I think we'll be okay, but if you do see something, please point it out so that I can make corrections because this will be available publicly. So the state of things, obviously want to thank everyone for coming tonight and recognize the challenges of differing viewpoints. And certainly things right now are, the complex problems are, are ever present. Everywhere we turn, whether it's social media, media, both platforms. But I think our challenges are ever present and it's just work that we need to do and know that that is there with different varying viewpoints. I think everybody wants to be safe. We all want to have our kids prepared to lead the future and we also want to be able to pay the bills. And I think those are important things that we're keeping in mind as we do this work. And as always, I'll say, we have a lot of work to do. That may, that may just be a forever statement. It doesn't mean we get complacent, but I do believe in community and I believe it will take us all. So districting, I put this up from a bit of a demographic component, or at least a chart of this. The image on the left is the density of our student population. So this is an interactive map. It goes beyond Lewiston, but you can see how, how dense the student population compared to other areas around us are, or is. And the, the map on the right, I actually took a picture of my bulletin board because that is our districting map. So when we talk about what kids go to which schools based on which roads and why, this is what that map was developed as. And on at least two different occasions, I believe in '09 and maybe even '14, there was an effort to maybe change some of this map. But I don't think our community was really feeling comfortable with moving away from what we call community schools. I don't think we're there just yet, but I think we have a conversation to have as we look at five new developments. If you look closely at this chart, you can see pinheads and those pins are where there are developments. And while we know that not every apartment or new housing opportunity will be filled with a family that has students that go to school, we know that some of them will. And where we're at some pretty high capacities currently is definitely a concern. And that's why we looked at things like, what about 287 Main Street, which I'll talk more about? What are some other options if that's not the right option for Lewiston Public Schools if we continue to grow? So just going through some, some data points real quickly. Connors Elementary School, I pulled these numbers recently. They fluctuate day to day with kids coming in or moving out. But Connors Elementary School, population of about 737. Firewall has 407. Geiger Elementary, 574. McMahon, 486. Montello, 672. And before I slide away from the screen, remember that we made a concerted effort at McMahon where we took over essentially a wing of that building to do some work with a program that we call CLIME. And that is students that we used to tuition out. I'll talk more about that tonight. We're having some success there. We want to continue to grow that. But that's how is at McMahon Elementary School. We are already seeing physical plant challenges with that program and its limitations on expanding because of physical space. Additional spaces, we have Lewiston Middle School at 739 students. Lewiston High School at just under 1,500. Next Step, serving high school age kids, but also the folks at Next Step. Philip also oversees our Root Ed program, which is a program that we're trying to use to keep kids from falling through some cracks, some of whom have had serious consequences and they have to work their way back if they, if they choose to do so. We also have our Owl program, which is an alternative to a middle school option where if kids, we know what we're seeing every day because we're professionals, been doing this work a long time, this kid is, is starting to check all those boxes of they're just not going to make it. We can obviously see the writing on the wall. This is an intervention program. Instead of waiting for a fight, waiting for them to just be truant all the time, we want them engaged in this process where they talk to them about their sense of belonging, where they are in the world, that education is important to them because of them and being productive citizens and contributing. So we're trying to catch some kids with that. Over 100 kids involved in those various areas. Lewiston Regional Technical Center, just as a reminder, we now have two campuses and this facility, the Green Ladle. So a lot of trades, business and medical programs over attached to the high school. And then in Auburn, we have growing programs there. But they serve 981 students when you include the campuses and just main graduate programming. Lewiston Adult Education, there may be some duplication here in these numbers, but they're serving 1,300 students and they have wait lists for lots and lots of programs. I wanted including here too, outplaced. We have 120 students that we currently tuition to go to school somewhere else because of the level of services they need that we cannot accommodate here locally. But that number is reduced from last year, even though we continue to receive kids that need high levels of support. And then we have some non-school building spaces. I put school in quotes because certainly the Dingly Building is our central office essentially, which is where we do all our HR, business office. We also have some IT folks working out of there, our facilities, leadership, my Karen's office and the work that we do. Nutrition, transportation, special education, outplace students and teaching and learning offices. I might be missing a piece, but all of those folks work out of, our human resources all work out of the Dingly Building. The building, the Dingly Building has gotten too small. We have our multilingual folks who used to be at the Dingly Building, working out of a space connected to the Longly Building because we don't have the physical plant to have all of them there. We also have the Student Resource Center. I separated it because that's also kind of a Longly area subsidiary. It operates on the bottom floor to the right-hand side of the building. And that's where we have our collaboration with the store next door. We have resources that are in and out for kids and, and growing that effort for our students who have, have challenges that include homelessness, but not just homelessness, but to allow them to have things to access school. And then 287 Main Street, which everyone in this room knows, but just to remind folks in the public, we purchased that building last year. It was something of a bit of an opportunity, I think, because we were strategic with Easter funds that allowed us to, to move forward on that project. That is not an end-all-be-all. That building needs renovations. I'll talk more about that. And we continue to wonder what else might work, including other spaces in our community. So just a quick sheet in demographics. I pulled this off of our analytics page and our student information system. And you can see some of these totals are a bit off because it may not include things like an outplace kid or things of that nature, but it gives you a good idea. Male, female, pretty even split. And you can see our other demographics there. And you can see the, the multi-ELL and special education numbers. Some of that is a blend because we have kids that are multilingual and special ed. And so they, they land in both of those categories. But just to give you a quick snapshot of some demographics. I know student discipline is something we've talked a lot about. And I think one of the real challenges when we talk about community safety and school safety has been what we can share and not share. I may touch on this more later. But in the more severe cases, which is always a challenge to work through, the school committee could, could speak to at least some, none of these situations or very few are black and white, where you know exactly what's going to happen. There, there's always some caveat, some kind of family dynamic, some kind of situation, some precursor. All of those things get, get brought into the, the conversation. But 16 students have already been expelled this year from Lewiston Public Schools. I don't say that because I'm proud of that statistic, but I say it so that people can understand there are lines and we do hold them. So many school districts don't expel students at all, or very few per year. And we are about halfway through the year. We already have 16 and we have additional hearings scheduled. Again, not proud of it. It's not what we want for kids, but we will hold lines and keep, keep our schools safe as much as possible. Some challenges that we have seen, I know earlier this year, there were some concerns around Montello that had a large newcomer population. And it's really hard to teach kids routines in non-traditional ways. So I know as a principal, I love bringing all the kids into the gym, one group at a time, and walk them through my expectations of them, the routines, and then practice them and reteach them. And when a third of your population does not know English and has never seen school before, it takes longer for those routines to be established. So a lot of times what we find, and you'll see this in some of our behavioral data, you see some spikes at times in data. You see blank spots because it's like February break or things like that. But then you'll see slowly, typically throughout the year, they decline until it gets hot outside. And you'll see some behaviors pop back up, but it's, it's kids establishing routine and understanding what the day is. And so that's, that's work we continue to try to get better with. Also want to make a note because we get a lot of questions about younger kids who are really struggling at school. Currently in law, if you're fifth grade or younger, we cannot send a kid home unless essentially they've hurt someone. So our hands become a bit tied. And if they have an IEP that speaks to a diagnosis that might lend itself to certain things, our hands could be tied even further. I'm not saying that from a perspective, I want to get in the business of sending kids home for long periods of time at a very young age. But I do think we're getting feedback from teachers and administrators that are saying, I'm running out of tools here for some of these behaviors. They're unacceptable and I can't under law send these kids home. And I would say not just under law, but we also get challenged with that. So we get due process claims. We've had lawsuits. The committee is familiar with some of those, but we've tried to hold the line because someone did get hurt or there was a threat of imminent risk. And so there's, we have very few tools, what we can do with that. We do have what we call a 45-day component where the superintendent can issue a student to be out of school for 45 days so that we can do further assessments and whatnot. But again, it usually stems from some kind of really imminent risk situation where someone was likely to get hurt or actual physical injury. And the lawsuits have gotten more complex where they're defining the level of physical injury and its appropriateness for sending kids out of school. So it's, 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 it's made it very challenging. We can do restorative work. We can suspend up to three days if there's a level of, of violence or potential injury. Beyond that, we are hopeful that that law will be revisited for various reasons. And we have shared that to all of our legislative delegation. And I know members of, of our team have said this in multiple spaces, whenever they're asking questions, do you have input on these things? And yes, we do. And we've provided that in verbal, written and, and other formats when it's welcomed. And sometimes when it's not. This is a weekly comparison. So this is, think of like office referrals or kids getting written up for something that's popped up. This is multi-year. So the things in blue are 22, 23, the kind of orange or not quite orange peach, maybe color in the background is 23, 24. And then the green is this year. So it goes by week. So what's the frequency of offenses in that particular week? When you see the low spots, that would be in and around breaks, holidays. And then you typically have a spike after a break and then things slowly work to a decline. You can see the number of occurrences for this particular school year are lesser than some prior years. Having said that, I want to make sure that our systems are documenting appropriately and getting entered appropriately. And we are in a transition, working on a code of conduct where people are more specifically itemizing what's going on with a student and what behavior occurred. But I will say we're a three-year window. I think sometimes people feel like the flood of the social media claims and statements, which are oftentimes not, not accurate. And we can't just go out there and, and push back against statements, both for privacy reasons and also I don't have enough time in the day. But when we look at a three-year trend, our behaviors are not at a higher level. I do think we're seeing more of a frequency of some more challenging behaviors in a classroom. But as far as the sheer volume, it's, it's actually not greater than it was in the last three years. Yeah.
I just had a quick question about, so the classification for the charts just says offenses? And I'm curious as to how those offenses are measured? What's an offense? Just for clarification.
Yeah. So we, we are working on our code of conduct and we have, I can split out data to all of those like level of severity and they range from classroom disruption, not following direction, all the way to posturing, physical violence, disrupting entire classroom, throwing things, hitting others, weapons, drugs, those kinds of things.
And to be clear, that's the entire school system that we're looking at.
Yes, that was the school system. Yep.
Member Bowden?
Thanks. Are you confident that all of the behaviors, like, like serious things that are happening throughout the day are actually getting reported back to you for this chart?
So this data is, it's created when administrators are dealing with write-ups that have been given to them. So if it's come from a teacher or an administrator, the only way they can process it to log it in our system now requires you to enter it.
Okay. Yeah.
Special education programming I touched on, but for a little more detail, I think our whole community made a commitment to bring more students back home to Lewiston schools. And we wanted to do this to serve students in their own community so that kids could be amongst their own peers. I think they deserve that. I think that's appropriate. But we also talked about, can we deflect otherwise costly tuition and transportation? And so that's happening. But we also want to make sure we are deflecting main care seed. That's that reimbursement matrix that I've discussed in the past. But just a quick recap, when we have kids tuition elsewhere, that provider can bill the state and the federal government for what they call main care seed. And we are on the hook for the main portion of it because we are the enrolling school. And so we get invoices from main care seed and we have to take care of that. So the more kids we have outplaced, the more of that reimbursement we're, we're responsible for. When we provide the services in-house, there are things that we can bill for primarily for services that we provide if the kids qualify that we get charged for if they go elsewhere. So that's, that's working. But we also want to ensure a high quality experience for kids. And I think we're also seeing that. I think this, this attempt at trying to build the CLIME program has excellent leadership, has staff that are working very hard and have done a lot of training. But we're currently serving about 40 kids there. And on the low end, we estimate those would have been, excuse me, those would have been about $100,000 per student and more to be transported in addition to tuition. So I think the lowest tuition I saw in any of these kids last year was $79,000 before transportation, before main care invoicing, and before any other services we had to provide while they were elsewhere. And there's this, there's this little niche in there too, that if an outplace special purpose private school can't provide a service like say speech therapy, but it's on a student's IEP, because they can't find someone or they have a logistical challenge, we're still responsible to provide that. And so it creates another logistical challenge to know those kids, provide those services and figure out those different schedules. So what we're projecting, I'm saying this very conservatively, we're projecting over a million dollars in savings when we consider these particular kids who otherwise we would have been paying tuition and all those other fees. I think it's about the savings as part of the process, but please know we have spent money. We've had to upgrade some facilities, some restrooms that needed changing stations for kids who need adult support. We've had to modify some doorways so that kids don't just kind of float off into a different part of the school without, without those intentions. We're finding McMahon, they've worked through some challenges, but they've had to use the modular outside for part of their spaces for therapy and for things like that. And transitioning these kids outside and inside is more of a challenge than transitioning other kids inside and outside. We're working through those. They're doing a good job. But space-wise, this is where we start to spill into that conversation of, is it 287 Main Street? Is it something else? Does Dingly Building become a special purpose private in-house program where that entire building is there for kids? We have a lot of things to talk about as a community. But when I say we're projecting over a million, I, I think today it could be as much as two, but I want to be careful in that statement so I don't overpromise. And I do like to keep reminding people that it's deflected cost because there are still costs. It's not just a flat savings. We still have to maintain those facilities and provide staff for those kids and do the trainings and all those things. Enrollment growth, we've talked about this a lot. We were up over 200 kids this year. We're starting to see some preliminary numbers for state subsidy next year. And the October 1 to April 1 numbers last year was I think a growth of 124 kids. Don't quote me. And that's including kids that moved away. So that's, you're talking hundreds of new kids and then other movements. But we, we know that some homeschool kids have returned to LPS, both for high school opportunities and, and to be real, post-COVID homeschooling is not the right thing for everybody. It works for some, but we're seeing more kids come back from that. There's obviously groups working on resettlement and those groups continue to have financial support. And so the resettlement efforts up until this past week or so have continued. And I don't, I don't know if that will shift in any way. Housing, which you're very familiar with, we do have a housing crisis, but we are, there are projects underway that are, that are growing the housing. So we have to be planning for that. Pre-K has a waitlist right now. People want their kids in pre-K. Child Development Services is a big thing. So there's a three-year transition window for that where the state is predicting that everyone will have to take on their CDS kids. We predict somewhere between 150 to 200 students. That prediction is a hard number to nail down because you have kids who are already in CDS. Those kids are known. But if kids could go to school all day and get services, I think we would identify more. I have nowhere to put those students. I don't have the service providers for it. We're looking at some different options. But next year, next school year, so '25, '26 is year two of implementation. We did not sign up to implement next year, which would put us in phase three, which would be two years out for us, that according to today's language, we will be required to program for those students. Class sizes are up and, and some schools are just out of space. The reason we did CLIME at McMahon in part was the, the kind of the one-floor layout and the accessibility pieces was convenient, but also McMahon School enrollment was down. And so now it no longer is because as other schools are getting overcrowded, we're actually taking new enrollments if we can figure out transportation and placing them at other schools. So our elementary schools, and it's not just this school is full as much as, all right, second, fourth, fifth and sixth is full here. And that this school might have room in those grades. So we're really trying to navigate it. Challenge to that is families want to get to know their school, their teachers, their administrations, their routines, their celebrations, their protocols. And if this is all about classroom sizes, when they change grades, if we see an influx, we might have to move kids from an elementary school they've been in for multiple years to another one, because that's just the class size challenge. And we're there now. I just, I want to let you know that we, we problem solve new enrollments on a daily basis. Karen does a big lifting on that. And any kid that goes to a school that's not in their district, we have to try to figure out transportation unless parents can transport. Another big topic, personnel. So the labor shortage in education is not just a Lewiston issue. I think in some ways it might be exacerbated here because we, we have some challenging situations. But we also find that once we get people here, they just love it. So we're working on getting people here. And some things that we're doing right now, there are federal and state grants. So there's a lot of funding available to grow the education labor pool. There's also some private foundations that have, like Alphonse, that have contributed to folks taking classes at low or no cost, as long as they pass, as long as they pass. And, and we've participated in numerous things like public hearings. We've talked to the Department of Education, the State Board, legislature. I, I do a lot in this realm, just hoping for a little bit of change to allow more flexibility for people getting professionally certified with, with different on-ramps and off-ramps. We did get awarded some funds to work with the Department of Labor and our Adult Education Program is facilitating an apprenticeship model. And we've also partnered with Central Maine Community College. And without getting lost in the weeds, to become professionally certified in the state of Maine, you have to meet all these different criteria. And I think they're appropriate, but the way in which you can obtain them, oftentimes you have to be matriculated in a college as a full-time student to have access to the classes that have the right title and number for them to be approved by the state for you to be certified. If you're teaching full-time, you can't be a matriculated full-time college student. You don't have the time. So we've argued that you need to shift this process, allow for other schools to teach those classes. That's where CMCC collaboration has come in. They have modified classes, changed textbooks, done what they need to do to meet what the state is asking for for people for credentials. And they're providing it to cohorts of teachers or ed techs or want-to-be teachers at times that they can access it, in the evenings, as a cohort, after school hours, more flexibility for that. And what we're begging the state for is to be a little more flexible with your rules and accessibility, but also give people more time. Because if they're doing a good job in a classroom and they're being evaluated by their administrative team, they have mentors that are peers, it doesn't have to be a three-year window. Why can't it be five or six years for someone to get their professional certification? I think you need benchmarks. You can't just kick the can forever. But right now you've got a one-year window and you might be renewed up to two times for a total of three years. It just doesn't make sense. If we have people in our classrooms that are doing a great job with kids, let's keep them there and keep them working toward it. So we do a lot of suggesting and talking around the personnel challenges. The next slide, we have a, we have a chart, but I do want to throw kudos out there that we've, we've increased certification in a number of areas. But we've reduced from 37 uncertified or on a waiver staff down to 17 in the first half of this year because of these efforts. Working with coaches, working with curriculum. We have a certification team that's working a lot to help people navigate the systems that we're trying to connect them to, that we're also trying to influence how they can shift and change to be flexible. And again, continuing to leverage funds outside of our local tuition, because one of my other complaints, you will, to, to legislators are, if you also require these things, it's built in the teacher's contract so they can request reimbursement. if you also require these things, it's built in the teacher's contract so they can request reimbursement. So if a teacher needs all of these classes, we're also asking the local taxpayer to fund all of those classes. This all doesn't add up. We have to find different ways to do this. And so here's, here's some certification data uh that HR provided us. Again, this is just the difference between semester one in blue and the start of semester two in red. And so everything is trending in the right direction except for the emergency certified, um, which, which has its challenges because of the rules around it. Um, you cannot be emergency certified um to do anything with special education. There are federal parameters that don't allow it, which makes it a challenge here locally because it's hard to find good special education teachers. A capital improvement plan, um, a lot of work goes into this. It's, it's a, it's a big lift. Uh, I wish um someone would just win, you know, one of those multi-billion dollar powerballs. Um, you know, uh, city administrator, um, Brian O'Malley said that he would donate all of it to the city, uh, I believe. But I, I know that we all have wants, right, from a city and school and all the different departments perspective. Um, but, but we have to be responsible uh with, with folks' dollars and, and the borrowing caps and things like that. Um, but just to put it out there, school department has close to one point one million square feet of building area uh and two hundred forty-seven acres of, of space or facility to maintain. Uh, the school portion of the recommended requests uh pulling out of the LCIP book uh is, is twenty-six percent of the total. Uh, and, and this includes things like the tennis courts that do need to be done, splitting that cost. Obviously, school uses it uh a, a lot and community does too. Um, but then it, you, you look at two point six five million um to, to develop and, and potentially ready two eighty seven Main Street for development, uh various projects around roofs, bathrooms, ADA, ADA accessibility to some of our schools, doors and windows that are in need of repair. So it's, it's hard to ask for more. We're trying to be very mindful of that. Um, we've worked with Brian a lot on what, what could we possibly do? Um, everybody has these needs, but there's a finite resource and we're mindful of that. Here are some things in the capital improvement plan. Um, I put LPS multi-year requests because every one of these has some kind of multi-year component to them. Um, so these aren't the final numbers. Um, but the educational space for growing enrollments, we phrased it that way because two eighty seven has been acquired. It's, it's property now of the, the city of Lewiston and the school department, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the answer. I can see a lot of potential, but there, there may be other solutions out there. Um, and you can see the list here that, that you may have already seen in your LCIP uh books. Um, so I won't, I won't continue to harp on that. So two eighty seven Main Street, this is a, a picture from the brochure uh that was given to us when we started looking into this. Wants and wishes, right? So when the peak of COVID hit, we had a lot of money that could be used to modify educational space for learning because of the spacing and the masking and all those requirements. We actually cold called Central Maine um Health Center uh to ask them what their plan was with this building. And at the time, they didn't know. And, and so the timing on that wasn't ideal, but they knew we were interested. I don't know if that contributed to who they chose, who their board chose to sell the building to. Um, I, I don't know that we were necessarily the highest bidder, but I think they felt more comfortable thinking this could be a school-related space as a neighbor and things, and things like that. Um, but with the growth of housing, in housing, the growth of enrollment, CDS coming down the road, um, doing nothing is not an option. I know that building's not ready for use. I know that building needs a lot of work. We did have assessments done on it, so we have that. Um, but it's, it's a viable option. Um, and I think there may be others. Uh, but for right now, that's one of the things that we are considering and, and looking for ways to fund. Last year, there was some, um, some discretionary funding through congressional folks. Um, I think we've got some traction in conversations. It didn't play out, but I think that's how it goes sometimes. So we'll continue to seek private donors, um, other funders, other mechanisms, and apply for grants and all of those things to do some work. Also being very mindful of the cost. Um, the facilities assessment, which is about, I'll call it a year old now. It's, it's less than that, but time moves quickly. It would be about fourteen million dollars to rehabilitate the building for school use. Um, and schools have more codes, more, more everything because we have children uh in those spaces. So that was a number that was given then. Um, I'm not naive, costs have not gone down. But we continue to look for ways to, to limit the impacts of the budget locally. And one of the LCIP items was asking, I believe, for a million dollars so that we could do some cleanup, do some uh pulling out of things that were left behind and um start some work on a concept plan to see what this building could look like. Uh, this building does have four floors. And, and we did a survey in June. Whoops, I put twenty twenty, it was actually twenty-four, my apologies. The top five uses for the building in the survey were a daycare space for staff, special education programming, child development services, a community meeting space, and a community collaboration space. Uh, so those items were, were the top five at that time, and I can make an edit there that was twenty twenty-four. I mentioned earlier a little bit, so if, if that building became viable over time, one of the things we could do is re-centralize our office that is now being broken out in, into one building, uh maybe use spaces differently. But then the, the Dingle Building could become available for something like what we're doing right now with climb at McMahon. That's one option. I don't know if it's the option. Um, I think community is going to have to chime in on this before we get too far down the road. Dingle Building, if we use it for school purposes, uh, there's ideas. You could use the parking garage across the street to park. You could make the back with a front, a green space or a turf-like space for a playground area. Um, the building could be used as a school again. Uh, and it's been a very long time since it was, but it was in fact a school at one point. Um, so there's, there's some ideas, ideas there. And I think one other thing we want to touch on was just balancing misinformation. I, I need you to know, and I know you hear it too, and I know I talked to so many of you at different times about different things, sometimes in passing, sometimes I get a call or a message. You know, we, we do our best to respect and follow the privacy rights of, of our kids, um, and things that are private are like any, by definition in, in FERPA, which is education uh privacy rights, anything that we keep a permanent record of on a kid is considered confidential. And so un- unless it's uh not demographics, uh directory information, um, it's, it's protected. So I can't hop online and make a post that says, no, that's not actually what happened. This is what happened. It, it's just got all kinds of liabilities built into it. And so uh I even find myself sometimes frustrated when I just so badly want to share out, no, that's not actually what happened. Um, there was one late last week where someone made a claim of something happened to a kid at the middle school, and that's not at all what happened. Um, we had someone punch a Plexigas window and hurt themselves. Um, and that was the whole story with ten witnesses, half being adults, half being kids. But that's not how it was portrayed. And then my inbox lights up and I get lots of inquiries and texts and, and I, I can't just go say, no, student A did this, and that's how it played out. That's, that's against the law. But just know that there's often information that we can, we can try to provide some answers and questions too, if you want to reach out, but there's things like social media and other things within the community that we're, we're just bound by law to maintain confidentiality. And, and to be real honest, I think it would be, it'd be detrimental to us to try to keep up with things on social media when we have, I think, much more important things to be doing um with all the, the room for improvement in our, our schools and our kids and behaviors and community safety and all of those things. Now, the, the big item, the budget. So here's, here's what we have for goals as we work through the budget. Um, we, we start the budget um in around November. It gets heavier in December. And right now we're, we're pretty much at, at full marathon. Instructions I've given to, to uh our principals and in different areas where they would present potential items. I've told them there'll be no new positions unless it contributes to our multi-year plan to serve students. It's a deflect cost. None. Uh, continue to program for kids where we can locally instead of paying for them to go elsewhere. Again, cost neutral over savings. Working to keep everything that's not contract obligated either flat or reduced. We're going through every line to see what can be reduced. And if it can't be reduced, we're doing everything we can to keep that area flat um from this year's current uh fiscal, fiscal levels. Uh, maintain the current level of staffing. That's something that we are hearing from everyone, at least in, in our group. They really want to keep the people they got. They, they don't want reductions to staff. As aside, some of it was cleanup from, I think, over budgeting over the years. But in the last two years, we have reduced the school budget by ninety-one positions. And we plan to uh introduce a budget in March that's under a four percent increase locally. Uh, we're going to do our best to get as low as we can. Um, we're taking the approach this year of like that on purpose, instead of trying to draw out, you know, uh some other theory on, on what could be or could not be. Uh, and, and the school committee certainly will have input on a, all those things and could decide something differently, but my plan is to walk in with something that's four percent or less and say this is as lean as I think we can do it and keep those goals. Uh, we plan to introduce a budget in March that's under a four percent increase. Yep. I got tons of information in here, but I didn't just want to talk for hours and hours, so I'll, I'll turn it up to any other questions.
Counselor Chittam?
Uh, thank you. When you say four percent, do you mean four percent of the school budget or four percent of the, of the tax base?
Local, just the local. Trying to keep it under four percent.
Again, four percent of the school budget or four percent of the combined budget?
So when we, we look at the cost here locally, I'd like to keep it under a four percent increase locally.
For the school budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kalan?
That's my goal.
Thank you. A, a couple of things. You talked about, you know, space and kids being moved around. Have you all considered maybe making a mega school that just has kindergarten or just fifth grade? That way the transition is not so great. If you all start in the beginning, then you farm out to your community school, then they get to grow with the kids in their area. Or the reverse is you get taken away in your last year, but you're going to middle school and high school, and that's all going to happen anyways. Um, I've seen models where they do that. They find a central school. It's simple to bring one particular grade, usually either the bottom or the top to, to make that happen. So I'd offer that as a suggestion that maybe you consider if you haven't done that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I'd also like to know what the unmandated fees are from the state. If you provide us a list again, we'll be meeting with our representatives hopefully sooner than later. But that's a pet peeve of mine, and I certainly would like to, to advocate to, to try to fix that as much as we can. When you did your students up there, you had high school and regional. Some of those are the same, right? I mean, so you don't have twenty-three hundred students. You have twenty-three, you have so many students that break into twenty-three hundred different jobs.
Yes, so uh, a, a, a good portion of the students that enroll, are enrolled and attend the technical center are also Lewiston high school students. And we also serve five other area districts. Um, they have less seats in many of these scenarios, but, but yes, to your point, it's not twenty-three hundred, it's kids that access that programming that are also Lewiston high school students.
So we can't charge the state for twenty-three hundred and get my money?
No, uh, but I, I do think that we are within the rules, but fiscally aware of what things we can have reimbursed or pay for upfront as part of their mechanisms.
Great. That's, that was my curiosity. Lastly, when are we going to get rid of cell phones in a high school? Okay?
I, I, I think that's a, that's, that's going to be a hot button topic. I, what I hear more and more from people is, yes, they want cell phones gone. They don't want the distraction. But they do want, uh, parents will tell us that they want their kids to be readily accessible at all times throughout the day. I don't know a way to do both of those things.
You have a parent to call the office, but they used to do. I know it's a lot more work for you, but a lot of schools are going to this model. And guess what? They're seeing a lot less crime, a lot less fights, a lot less problems. Um, and I just think that, you know, at some point, we need to just throw it out there and just live with the people who cry. I mean, quite frankly, if you talk about being safe for children and taking care of the whole process, you're not going to have these videos on Facebook of all these incidents that really not true that all the people who say things are, are correct. So that's my two cents. But I think we ought to pursue it and let them shoot it down, and then we can shoot them in the leg for saying, well, you don't want it, so be it. But I, I haven't seen what's been proposed, and I think we ought to start that conversation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But one interesting thing came up uh recently. We were working with um the Chief St. Pierre and the Lewiston Police Department and some others on talking about school safety and community safety. And we did a focus group with a kind of randomly selected group of kids during midterms. Was it last week? It time flies. Um, and student feedback was very, very interesting. It wasn't at all what I would have thought, but some of the kids, one of uh several kids said, excuse me, that they are actually not fearful to go to school day to day, but they see more violence on their phones because when there is a something, it just gets spread to everywhere from multiple angles, whether it's in school, out of school, or a possibly in school or near school thing. And, and we did have a group of eighth graders um bring it up as they transitioned into high school that they liked their middle school experience not having the phones. So I, I do think that, well, one, I know it's beneficial, I think philosophically, but I do think that there are, there are some kids that have come up and said even recently that that the cell phones are more problematic for their lack, not just inability to focus, but the, the lack of ability to separate from the outside noise. Um, and not just noise of, I'm addicted to my phone, but the noise of what's coming through the screen and, and how really terrible some of it is. Things that they said, we had one student say, I've heard of fights at the high school. Who I think she was a junior, might have been a senior, I forget it. Um, I've never seen a fight at the high school. I've seen the fights on my phone that have happened at the high school, but it's never happened near me. I don't feel like I'm not safe at school. Those things usually happen between groups that are at each other and it's social media driven and all of those things. So to your point, I, I think it's something worth inquiring about.
Member vote?
Thank you. Um, so I do have a budget question, but since you were just talking about that, I just want to put my two cents in, since the conversation is out there. Um, it's no secret I have a child at Lewiston High School, and I would not feel safe ever sending her to Lewiston High School without a cell phone. I would not. I would never support that as a parent. Um, fights have broken out right in front of her. As she's like walking to lunch, a fight will break out. She's kind of desensitized to it at this point. Um, and I mean, I, I told the committee this through email. She wrote me a three-page letter. She actually wrote this committee a three-page letter. I haven't read it to you yet, but she asked me to. I'm not going to do it tonight because it's not the night for it, but um as a parent, I would not vote in favor of that ever, ever. If she doesn't have a cell phone on her, I don't feel like she's safe. I need to know where she is. I need to know that she's safe and she can call me if she needs to. That's just the state of affairs that we're in this day and age um with schools. It is what it is. That's how I feel. Um, but to the budget, um, as far as our fund balance goes, that wasn't brought up at all in any of these slides. So I'm curious, are we starting our budget talks with the five million or the six-point whatever million that we had to go with last year? Because I know we're running kind of low and where there's no extra positions to um refill it, we're, we're in a, we're in a lot of trouble next year when we go into budget season. Um, so I'm just curious where that's at and where you're going to start our fund ballots at in the budget.
Well, I'm a hopeless optimistic, so maybe we're not in trouble for years to come. Um, but, but I think um there will be some things that we share. Um, we have to solidify state subsidy numbers and get more information that's whole and real on that, and then we'll know more about that balance. But uh I guess my hope tonight was to make sure people were assured that when we said last year we listened to voters and that we have a budgetary concern that our, our community is saying is too high, we're listening and we do everything we can to, to keep that as, as low as possible.
Member Eames, did you have your hand up? Okay, um, Mayor Shewin?
Uh, maybe I missed it on the uh demographic slide, but how many different languages are spoken in our public schools?
Oh, I'm going to get this wrong. I think we're up to thirty-seven or forty-two, forty-two. Different languages spoken by our students.
Forty-two.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Counselor Chittam?
Um, thank you. Last year at this meeting, we had a, a, a long discussion and uh encouragement for the school committee to pursue uh bringing this private special education in-house. And I'm encouraged by the progress that appears to have been shown on these slides. I did want to clarify though, you indicated there are forty students now that are be, that had been brought in this year as a result of your efforts, uh averaging about a hundred thousand dollars a pop. That's four million dollars. Uh, am I to infer from the fact that you're talking about a one million dollar savings that this program has cost us three million?
So I, I think the savings or the deflected cost will be higher than one. I just didn't want to get ahead of myself. It's early in the year and these are year-round positions now because these students go year-round. Um, and we've had some um intangibles in this particular year that we won't have, say, next year, like renovating a group of bathrooms, uh which was costly from a permanent like renovating a group of bathrooms, uh, which was costly from a permitting and execution perspective. Um, and we've had to, you know, move some equipment, add some equipment, modify spaces, things that once they're set up, they can just be used. So there was some additional cost from a facilities and and ramp up perspective that I I think are going to eat into what we deflected this year that would not necessarily be there next year.
So in other words, the one million dollars is is a conservative estimate of the amount that has been saved through through your efforts.
Very conservative. I I don't think I'd be going too far out on a limb to say that it might be closer to two.
All right, well, let's.
But until we get there, I I want to make sure I don't over over project.
I'm with you in being conservative in our in our revenue estimates and liberal in our cost estimates. It fewer surprises that way. So congratulations and kudos to the effort that the school committee put forth into into working that issue. And I would encourage you to continue working that and and not not let it slip. Bring these students back home and provide those services locally that we are now paying an arm and a leg for externally. Thank you.
Thank you, and I I'd be remiss if I didn't say April Karen, Katie Colasante, and other leadership over at McMahon, including Charlotte Johnson, have done an amazing job to make this even possible.
Counselor Najin, did you still want to speak?
Yeah, um, there's a couple of things I'd I'd just like to come back to. So one of the things that we had that you had kind of covered was that there's still a need for the community school. And yet we know that in in many cases, students are attending schools outside of their particular district, and that's based on both the skill sets that are at the particular schools, especially in the elementaries, and then overcrowding at certain schools as well, I believe. There's there's a piece where I I there's students at Montello that should be technically at Connors, right? Is that correct?
So there's a few things that are going on with that. So yes, uh, but there's also, um, so we have an what we call an out-of-district process where parents can request to have their children go to out-of-district placements. And by out-of-district, I'm talking about the in-Lewiston districts. So parents say, for example, uh, my daycare is over by McMahon. I'd like for my kids to go there. You have a bus that goes there. This will all work out well for my family. And where we can, we accommodate that. Once the school year starts, it's very difficult to say to a kid, I know this is your daycare, or to their family, I know this is your daycare. I know this is the school you've gotten familiar with, but our numbers are ticking up, so we're going to bump you elsewhere. So it it kind of lands at times, I I think this is to your question, where a school just has a capacity in a particular grade. And instead of disrupting the kids already in that classroom or that school, we try to find a placement that is a better fit because of our current enrollment sizes. One of the things we hear from teachers a lot is that the bigger the class, the more difficult it is to deliver that differentiated instruction for for kids that might have different levels of need. Um, and we do have classes that are in the in the twenties. Um, and we're trying to make sure we don't have a school that has a classroom in, you know, with twenty-four kids in a fifth-grade class and another school that has fourteen. So we try to strike that balance where we can.
So it just brings to light like a couple of concerns. So the first one obviously is is getting, you talked about consistency in education in in routine, right? And so we do have problems with the buses, we know. And so there's a question on on how that all plays in, like how we actually get the kids to school. And then also, we know that particularly at Farwell and Geiger, um, you know, we we have issues with parents being able to access the schools and drop off the kids. There's tends to be, it disrupts local traffic, you know, uh, there's long wait times, all these. Yeah, I mean, it was. So it it just sounds like based on the community school approach isn't actually working at this point because of the fact that we have the all of these limitations in 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 and both desires from the community to send their children to different schools um, as well as is where we have the the staffing pieces. And so I guess the question is like, when do we start looking at the logistics of actually getting kids to school consistently, right? Because that's part of it, like consistently being able to come to the same school. Like, and then you're right about the the class sizes for sure. You know, obviously, if you have any, as the classes get larger, especially when you have differing needs, educational needs for the students, it it becomes more and more difficult to deliver a quality educational experience. So, you know, it, these are things that you're naming that like seem intractable, and it sounds like we're building on making it more difficult, right?
Yeah, and to add a layer, so if if a family shows up and they go to school A instead of school B where they maybe should go because of where they live, because that works better in general, they may not realize that they're not in their district. And so when we call them and say, hey, every year you have to reapply for these, we've actually found a lot of people don't reapply because they didn't realize there are places in school that's not in their district. Um, and so when we tried to undo this over the last couple of years to make it more specific to the lines, really because of transportation, and we're trying to get real consistent, we found hundreds of people that have been placed over the last multiple years. Because remember, if you're in there for pre-K, you're expecting a seven-year experience at this particular school through sixth grade. And so there were decisions that were made seven years ago that I don't want to undo for a family that's gotten familiar with school A or school B for six years and now they're in sixth grade, and these are all their peers, and they know all the teachers, and they know the routines and the pickups and the drop-offs and all those things, and say, you can't go there anymore. So there's there's no real clean way to to undo that. And in a district our size, we're talking about hundreds of in-district placements or requests that are in place on any given year.
Counselor Galant.
Thank you. Follow-up. How many kids do we have in the element, in that grade level that we're concerned? What's the total number? I've seen seven, four. I mean, what, thirty-five hundred? That that are community school-based? Three thousand?
So kids that go to schools in the districts and where they should be?
No, no, I, you know, I, when I seen the numbers and I hear what Councilman Ajin saying, but I'm thinking that if you got three thousand kids and three hundred are displaced, that's only ten percent. So community schools are working.
Yeah, I would say the core of our community schools is based on the map that I showed you really with the districts. They are majority where they should be.
So so it's really a small percentage per se that you guys make the, you know, because it sounded like fifty percent of the kids weren't allowed to go where you were supposed to go, but it's not. I know, I know it's a very small number, so whoever's listening out there and, you know, and paying attention, I think we do a great job, you all do a great job, keeping them in their community schools the best you can. You know, but ninety percent of the kids are going to where they're supposed to go. It's at ten percent because either classroom size or parents who would like to move their kids, which I understand. As a as a parent before, I wanted my child to be closest to however I could get to them for whatever the reason may be. But I just want people to be aware that it's not a huge number because it it could, it sounded like it's a lot more, and I know I didn't think it was.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to bend, bend on that side.
I think that's a good clarification. It's a big number in one sense, but when you look at the whole, it it is something small, much smaller than, you know, ten percent or maybe even less. And and some of those, again, are parent request because of their family situation, where Graham's house is or things like that, but. Yeah.
Member McGough.
Thanks, yeah. This wasn't a part of your presentation, but would you mind just sharing with this group a little bit how you think about and how you might suggest, you know, we've focused on the academic success of the students, whether it's graduation rates or post-graduation placements or grades, other things like that. So I know with all the stuff going on, sometimes we don't get a chance to focus on that enough.
But I I think I maybe didn't say it explicitly, but I think one of the cores to the work that we do is really around how we support our educators to be the best that they can be. We do have things in place. We have a truancy subcommittee as as a district, working on making sure we're consistent with messaging, trying to get kids to school more frequently. I do think that parents have changed a fair amount in that, um, we have a lot of kids missing a lot of school. Sometimes it's, it's not the stereotypical situation you might think it is. It's it's the person who may get up and go to work every morning and and seem like a stereotypical productive citizen, and their kids just aren't at school. We we've looked at some even recently as we go through our truancy data and think I'll be reflective of 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 this without sharing any names, but thinking, I know these parents and they they're productive members of our community, and their kids have missed thirty days of school and been tardy sixteen times. And I'm like, how is that feasible? And this is a capable kid, hasn't had illness, anything like that. So I think there's a a community component to making sure kids come back to school and go to school every day and develop that resilience of being there when they can. But also knowing that there are illnesses and there are IEPs. I heard of a situation recently was where someone was actually asking me, um, it might have been Monday, about a student who graduated with a third-grade reading level and missed eighty days of school. And when I ask clarifying questions, it turns out that student has an IEP, had a certificate of completion plan, which they had met. And so that's a specially designed program. That's not the typical student earning a diploma. Um, and so we want to be clear that there's, there are some stories out there like that. But we want to get more detail. I think continuing to be consistent with our curriculum and continuing to support educators with our coaching model will benefit kids because they'll have a consistent program that teachers know that they can be familiar with and continue to implement it over a multi-year window instead of continuing to change. We're going to use this program now. We're going to use that program now. Every time we change, I think the adults trying to implement this just feel like here we go again. And if we can stick with some of the strategies that we have in place right now, we will have success and and continue to grow those models. But we're not without success. Uh, we did just real recognize a student who's, um, there was actually two, but one was able to be here in person, who received scholarships to go off to college to the tune of three hundred plus thousand dollars. Everything, including some incidentals, to go to school after doing some internship work over the summer, uh, which was another great opportunity. So students are having a lot of success, but I always want to get better. But I really think the key for me is really in the curriculum and sticking with the supports for teachers so that we can continue to refine the practice and grow the craft so that we can be more successful with kids. But behaviors are a challenge, and that takes away from instruction and routines are a challenge. So that takes away from, uh, you know, good transitions and all of those things have to continue to to come together.
Counselor Salt.
It's just a follow-up. Can you hear me, Kay? It's just a follow-up from what, um, you were talking about when students miss school. Are they required to make up that missed time? And I know that some have excuses and reasons, I don't mean excuses like excuses, but they have legitimate excuses. But, um, for those students who just choose not to go to school.
It's 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 unique to every situation. So sometimes they need to make up pieces of the work, and we hold lines with with internal policy. Uh, but there's other times that there's really no mechanism, um, unless we're going to pay teachers to stay late and the parents agree to keep them there.
Well, I just, can I share a story, my story? When I missed a lot of school when I was in school, I turned eighteen my junior year. So I was able to sign myself out, and I took full advantage of that. So my senior year, I had to make time up for days missed, and I was not going to graduate if I didn't. The same with every every other student. I also went to a very small school. I had fifty-two students in my class. But, um, yeah, I mean, the state said you had to be here at this amount of time. We had to be there that amount of time. So I'm just curious if that's is still the the case.
So from a philosophical perspective, not necessarily in my philosophy, but a philosophical perspective, the state law right now is built around standards and what you know and what you're able to do and not about seat time. And so working on a model of you missed my class, you have to come sit here is the is a is a model that doesn't fit today's requirements for graduation. I have my own hardships with wanting kids to have good routines and be able to do things that people have said should happen so that they're equipped to just be resilient as they grow and and do life. But to your point, it's not written that way anymore, where it used to be Carnegie units and seat time. And you had to sit in a spot for, there's a reason, they talk about forty-five credit hours at the college level or a hundred and thirty-five. It's because that's how many hours that class would meet, or you were expected to do outside of class to have something qualified for the program studies and be part of your graduation criteria. And so the shift away from Carnegie units happened a long time ago. Um, and I'd say it's been at least a decade since we've shifted to the at least standards referenced kind of work. But that effort took away that that philosophical line of you've got to be sitting in my class this many minutes because of.
I think it can also hurt that student possibly down the road if they take that same. I don't know the word I'm looking for. I do, but I'm just not going to say it. That routine into the job, that's just not. So I just, I don't think choosing not to come to school and then at the end of the year being like, mm, whatever, it's just not good practice, I think, for these students further down the road.
I agree. And this may not be popular, but I graduated two hundred and seventy-fifth, I think, out of my class of three and a quarter. School was what it was for me. I I did very well in post-secondary school and and I think since. But there's a lot of factors to why I would sit or not sit in the classroom. And like you, I knew the rules. I I could get some things to bend so I could still be at certain things and and not at others on on a day-to-day basis, especially as a senior.
Well, as a senior, you think you know it all.
And. Well, I'm pretty sure I did.
I think I did too. I mean, my grades were pretty good for missing the amount of school that I missed. So at that age, I'm, you know, I'm thinking to myself, well, I didn't need to be here, obviously. And it just, it isn't really, that's not the case.
Right.
It is another reason why they should be here.
I I agree. I think routines are important. I mean, I have some strong beliefs about wanting kids to be in in a classroom and and to be there for the educational opportunity and the learning. There's a, there's a lot of feelings out there about it. But one thing I would challenge too is is to say to employers or people who are going to do the hiring, ask to see someone's transcript because the standards that are scored there and the grades that they got, that's what's actually reflective of what they did with school and not checking a box that you have a diploma. Lots of people can get a diploma, and it varies from community to community. It's different in Auburn than it is here, and Lisbon than it is here, and all these, all these pieces. And from a credit base, uh, we actually have higher expectations in Lewiston than a lot of schools do. You know, but we we hear from kids saying, you know, when I went to college, I wasn't ready to write that paper. I didn't have these routines. I didn't have the structure in my day. And college is very different from, say, high school. I think we all know that, uh, if if we went to do it. But the readiness piece for me is is really about, are you willing to be a lifetime learner and decide that you can do it and be disciplined enough to get after it? So I think those are big components too with the academics. And the students that go do it, oftentimes there's better home structures. There's, there's more success academically throughout. And we find that some of those kids may navigate and have absence issues or truancy issues, but most of them don't. But they oftentimes turn into kids who do complete college, even if they've had some hardship, excuse me, have some hardship. They are productive members of our community, so it's a little bit of everything. And sometimes when I say it takes us all, it's the parents that, do you know where your kids are tonight? Are they having a sibling watch them, or are you asking them to sit and read? Are you talking about things that are around fluency and vocabulary and efforts as a parent? So I I think we got to grow that in our community too. I'm not just looking to point fingers, but you can learn a whole lot, not in school, that will help you be successful in school.
I agree.
Counselor Najin.
So I just want to talk to a couple of points about about the perception of of safety and 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 possibly violence at at the middle school in particular, right? Because I have constituents that have pulled their children from the middle school because they're afraid of the bullying that that occurs on some levels. And it seems that that, the middle school has the majority of the conflict in comparison to the elementary schools. I'm wondering if, one, you could speak to that, and two, uh, maybe fill in the gaps as far as, you know, the expulsion pieces. What happens to those children after they're expelled? Like what what alternative track are they required to fill in order to continue some type of educational programming and and you know, self-regulation of behaviors and all of these other pieces that they're introduced to in the school system that if you remove them from the school system, like what happens, basically? So if you could just speak to both of those points, because I do know that like a lot of what we're hearing about the middle school is not necessarily completely correct. But I also know that I've seen some things at the middle school that that is, that is correct, so.
Lots of things. There's lots of concerns, I think, at every level. I don't think it's just middle school specific. It might just be who who has, you know, your ear to share their concerns. And I'm not invalidating their concerns. We have concerns at all levels. We've also had some more complex conflicts than we've had in the past, where it's crossed over between middle and high school. Middle school kids going to high school, high school kids going to the middle school and and different community groupings where younger and younger kids are out and about, not with adults, not supervised, and. out and about, not with adults, not supervised and having some pieces there. That's a piece of it. I, I also think there are some serious challenges right now with social media and the, the, the brain of a twelve and thirteen year old. And so when you're exposed to things that never stop, the bullying, the comments, the need to check your phone or that kids can check their phone at midnight, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning. We've had situations, we've had to meet with students that they come to school red hot and the messaging has gone on all night long, back and forth. And one shows one side and the other shows another side. And I'm thinking, why do you even have a phone at that time of night? But the conflict is real. And I think when you get into that stage of development, there's a sense of pride, obviously. Nobody wants to look bad. Nobody wants to feel inadequate, especially at that age, sometimes even more so. I think that grade six to grade ten kind of frame is a really vulnerable stage for kids in their, in their development. And, and I think that the social media piece is really heavy. But it's, it's real. And, and so I think we're seeing some more conflicts around that. And it's usually kids who have been at war with each other with their devices more so than, I don't know, I'm not trying to be old in the moment, but people didn't fight over that stuff when I went to school. You know, they might fight over, you know, someone, someone's dating someone or you picked on someone about their weight or their looks or their something. But what happens online is really just unbelievable. Kids are being exposed to things that are just not okay. We did see a reduction in some things at the middle school when the phones got put away. But it still happens outside of school, off school hours. So yes, we've had concerns in the middle school that we've had to address. We continue to address and try to improve there. You know, and today's instance is a good one. We had, we believe young adults who have graduated or no longer attend school or not school aged. We had high school kids all connected to some kind of middle school turmoil. And, and that, that didn't go well and we're still working out the details. But I never heard of anything like that as a kid. And so I, I think it's, it's on us. I, I'm not denying it. It's on us as a school to do better and to figure out how to problem solve these things. But I also think it's important that we continue to draw hard lines and make sure people know you cannot do this here. It's not going to be allowed. And it may not be perfect all the time. There's a lot of laws. There's a lot of protections, but I know this committee has worked hard to, to maintain the safety when events happen and hold the line. Expulsion piece, when kids are expelled, we have by law, there's steps that we have to take. And one of the steps after expulsion is, is to develop a reentry plan. That can include a lot of things. The school committee has a lot of discretion there. The things we typically see from the school committee range from mandating a, a psychological risk assessment, community service, counseling, restorative work around, well, who did you violate in this process? And then through our Root Ed program, we provide kids the opportunity to engage in that work to better themselves, to demonstrate that they're ready to return to school. It's a choice to engage. We follow up with them by rule every one, three, six month if they're not engaged. But we're finding a lot of kids who do engage and they get challenged on what is the root of what you did? And, and why did you act that way? And what impacts it had on the school and the community as a whole? And I would, I mean, I think the school committee members would, would nod too, but I think all but one student who has been expelled, who has done the actual work they put in place for them to return, all but one have remained in school and actually done pretty well. We did have one reoffend and that was dealt with immediately also. But we do have a reentry program. It's offered to kids. We do facilitate it. They have to engage.
Thank you.
Counselor, I'm sorry, member Bowden?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that when a student is expelled, the superintendent is still responsible for making sure that they have some sort of educational services by law. So we're not expelling students like, see you later, you know, we're never going to see you again. Jake is really great about, you know, meeting with the family after and making sure that expectations and requirements are put into place for them. And we've seen a lot of success with students coming back to us. And, you know, I think we would all agree that the reentry hearings, when we find out it's a reentry and not a disciplinary, we're all like, oh, good. Because it, it just means we're about to hear some really great stuff from the student that's been out. And they are successful when they come back, the majority. So it, it is really great.
And when they come back from the rooted program, the ones that do engage in the rooted program, it's not just about the academics. Like that's a part of it, but they come and they give us a presentation on, they went hiking. They went and experienced things that they otherwise wouldn't have experienced, like out in the community and they do community service. Most of them are doing counseling on some level, but the rooted program is so social, emotional based that they come back and they give us a presentation talking about, I learned how when somebody pushes my buttons to not explode or how to handle my own anger and things like that. So it's not just the academics. They're learning like how to function in society with their peers. And that's amazing to see the transformation.
Yeah, I think that's the piece that, that the public in general doesn't realize at this point. So if we are, we have a high level of expulsions, but we also have, or maybe not actually for the, for the school system size. But, you know, we are expelling kids, but they are actually still getting an educational opportunity. And then, as you've said, many of them come back into the school system, correct?
They do. So any kid that expels, excuse me, that gets expelled has to come back before the committee to request reentry. And that is a whole process connected to their reentry plan. And the committee actually ultimately votes on whether or not they'll allow students to reenter school.
Mayor?
You brought up a great point, Counselor Najin. You know, we're, we're the second largest school system in the state and superintendent, it Connors is probably the largest elementary school in the state. And then the high school is the largest high school in the state. And so, yeah, I mean, we, we have maintained, what are we at fourteen eighty-eight for students? Is that what was on the?
At the high school?
Yes. I mean, like what roughly fifteen hundred people, like there are main towns that don't even have fifteen hundred people. And so, yeah, there's, there's, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, trying to downplay any of the incidents that have happened, but certainly because of social media and everything else, it's possible to, to know about, you know, so many incidents when, when there weren't before, when, when you couldn't know about all of them before. And, yeah, I mean, some of this is just simply, you know, things are happening at scale here. And if I remember, so school incidences are, for the past three years, remind us or, or holding steady or?
I, I would say they're holding, but I, I, I do think, I don't want the data to be perceived the wrong way. I think we have some challenges right now that we've not seen before as it relates to student behavior. I think it's the, 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 it may seem less like a, we have a similar amount of incidents or offenses, if you will. But some of the offenses that we might have seen two years ago were, you know, a kid threw a piece of paper and then told the teacher off when they were asked to pick it up and it turned into a refusal and, you know, slamming a door. I'd consider that to be an offense, maybe even a couple. Now that kid's chucking, you know, a cop at, at another child at times. And so one of the things I think we really have to do is have more tools and more lines to draw. But we also need to do more educating and more teaching and more support of what happens outside of school. What are some strategies you do have? And, and I think the reason I say that is we look at the very severe instances like the kids who are expelled. When they go through certain processes, they come back to school, a different kid approaching things differently. I don't have the resources to do this with, you know, almost six thousand kids. But when we talk about different programming around the ruler program and social emotional learning, which I know is a conflicting kind of piece for some people sometimes politically, this is what employers are saying they want. They want someone who can show up for work on time, treat their customers well, do what they're asked politely, have a good work ethic and go about their day and not getting fights, not show up late, not, not provide bad customer service, all of those things. So we're trying to strike a balance between all those things. And, and not to deviate too far from your point, this particular campus right here can have over three thousand people on, on any given time of any given school day, between the technical center, Connors and the high school and staff. And if you add Longley to that, it gets even bigger. And that's, I mean, a stone's throw away from the high school. So there's a whole lot of people in this, in this small area. And so I think we are going to see different things come up, but the, the level of severity of some of the behaviors, it's like up here, it's, it's, it's different. It's more disruptive to classrooms. It's harder to contain. It's harder to redirect and get back on task. I'm just calling it like it is. And I know I'm the superintendent and I know I have work to do. It's, it's not just a Jake thing. But the, the levels of behaviors that we're seeing from lots of kids are fundamentally different from some of the other offenses we saw in the past.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Member Eames?
It's not just Jake, but it's also not just Lewiston. It's actually all over the state and all over the country that these things are changing. Something happened with social media and the COVID, combine that and some things happened and it's all over the country that these things have escalated and shifted. So I just wanted to make sure that was also out in the public.
And that's evident even with adults. Like there's a level of social immaturity, like that happened through the course of the pandemic and people being homebound and stuff like that, that I think the country is still working out, probably the world is still working out. But you see it in like arrest reports and for those kinds of incidents and stuff. So it's not just our kids. I think it's across the board. There's, we've got to get back to a baseline that we had pre-two thousand and twenty.
And that wasn't an excuse. I was just trying to explain.
Yep.
Member Bowden?
But I also want to add, you know, it's, it's not a secret that there's a lot going on in this community with, with drugs and specifically with weapons. And I feel like every day in the news, we're hearing about another fourteen year old, a fifteen year old and gun violence and it's terrifying. And, you know, as a parent, I'm on high alert with my student at the high school and I know all parents are on high alert right now. And it's, it's scary. And then you hear about fights that break out and you, and you hear rumors about, well, this person had a knife at school today. This person had a gun. You hear these things and it's absolutely terrifying. So when we say the level is different, like it is terrifyingly different right now. And, you know, I'm not trying to like cause panic, but there's a reason why everybody is on high alert right now and social media is going crazy because the things that we're seeing, the things that we're reading, the things that we're hearing on the news is scary. And it, it's in this city.
Counselor Najin?
I, I would just say to, to all of that is, you know, there's a need to innovate and adapt. You know, there's pieces where I know that everybody's a mandatory reporter, right? But I also know that that's a one-way process, right? You never actually find out what happens in any, in any of those pieces. So, you know, the, the communication between the folks that are protecting our community and protecting our kids needs to be better. And I think that, that we're doing some work in order to, to, to get to a point where we can communicate with possibly the folks who, who hold keys in the housing, folks that hold keys in the educational process and folks who hold keys in the community as, as, you know, to protect and serve our, 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 our community. So, you know, all of the, all of those pieces kind of, I think, need to fall together because there, there's a, there's a requirement, I think, that we have, that we dedicate effort to our, to our, to our future, to our, to our youth, not simply six, seven, eight hours a day. There's, it's, it's a continuum and all of those pieces kind of have to work together to communicate in order to fill those gaps when there are gaps. And clearly there are some gaps in this community where there's not enough support for, for some of the more marginalized populations that are attending our schools. So. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, that I know that there's work being done in order to innovate so that there's communication there because it's super important. Once you leave school, as you mentioned, you know, like if you have conflicts that are, that are carrying over into your social media and your real life on your street, in your neighborhood, that also comes back into the schools when you come back the next day. So.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. One of the things I want to say to add to this conversation is, is I think that you have some really good faculty at the high school. I've got to say that right now because again, going through some of the things, I've got a, a son that does go to the high school and the teachers that are involved in my stu-, my son's life are really, really special. They're really cool. Got to say that first off. I want to bring this back a little bit more towards the budget. I don't want to stray away from this conversation because I think it's very important for everybody to understand and let's get, you know, some ideas out there and how we can, you know, move this forward and help, help out. But back to the budget, last year I wanted to try to dig more deeper into the Dingle building and some non-forward facing positions. The school budget, I really want to dig into that. I want to know what positions are at the Dingle building. I want to know some, I don't know if I can know salaries and all this stuff. I really want to know some of the positions that are not geared towards the students. I want to know how we might be able to look at those positions and maybe see what, what, what we can do to lower the budget, the, 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 the cost of the budget. So that's one of the things I just wanted to put out there so that you can be kind of mindful of that when we're looking at the budget this year. Okay. Because I've heard from a lot of constituents, every time they talk about the budget, they're talking about the Dingle building. That is what they're talking about. So just want to throw that out there. Okay.
Counselor Najin?
So sorry for this, but I, I, I think we all, we're all aware of the fact that this budget season is going to be very difficult, right? And the re-annals are, are right around the corner and that's fueling a lot of concern in the community as well. And so I would just say that it's incumbent upon all of us to communicate very clearly and to work together and to all row the boat in the same direction. So basically that's, you know, the council and the school committee working in unison together to, to actually make the message clear to the public because your budget can be voted down. The municipal budget cannot. Last year, there was a lot of conversation around the, you know, the, the school, the city council made the wrong decisions for the school committee, right? It's one budget. So let's work together as a group to make sure when we go before the constituents, we're standing behind the product and can explain it and, and hopefully see it passed the first time. So.
Member Bowden?
To that point, do any of the counselors or the mayor have a suggestion for us on a percentage to stay under?
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. One of the things I'd really like to know to answer that question would be, what are the constituents thinking? I really want to know because again, they had a voice last year, loud and clear. They were shouting a lot of stuff, right? So in order to answer your question, I'd really like to first see what constituents are, would really like to see out of this budget. What do they think the main points are? What do they think we should be spending the money on? Where can we, what do they think we can cut? And then as a group, then we can look at that and say what works and what doesn't work. I think that would be my suggestion.
On that same point, I think like educating the public right from the very start, I know that towards the end of the budget season, there was a lot of involvement. But early budget meetings, we didn't have a lot of engagement with the community. And that's when a lot of the things like require local share is discussed and things like that, that maybe the general public doesn't always know about, like we have to have these minimums or else we start losing funds and that kind of stuff. And so I think doing a really good job promoting our budget meetings even better than we ever have so that we get constituents following along from the start of the process and not just at the end. I think that would help a lot too.
Counselor, sorry. Member McLaughlin?
I'll just say, I think now's a perfect time to plug, if you don't mind. Jake, just that the superintendent is trying to do a bit of a roadshow, I guess I could say, in just looking for community organizations and groups and opportunities to go talk about the school system generally, but really the budget in particular. I know he's been looking for places to, to do that type of thing. I hope he doesn't mind me saying this, so I'm kind of trying to broadcast this a little more. But, because I, I think, I'd certainly, I, I think all of us probably feel similarly in that we do want more public engagement from the beginning, instead of only at voting time, you know, just so that we can more feel like we're on the same page. That's, that's how I feel.
So just because you shared, I, I opened, I have a draft email that was worked on today, something we've been working on. But this will be going out to different community members. I would ask if you have different groups that meet in our community that you think it might be good to stop in at blank or ask them if you could be on their agenda or just join a meeting to get feedback. But we've, we've called it a listening and information sharing component. So this is the draft message that it hasn't been sent yet, but this is we're reaching, reaching out to you to see if we can find a time that works for your group and schedule to, together to, to listen and share information. The goal of coming together is to hear what our community wants from our schools, our school budget and share relevant information. We believe schools should be driven by the wants and needs of the community and we want to hear your voice and student voice. We could drop in, participate or present items. In addition, if these times do not work, we will host a town hall style meeting, potentially on February twenty-sixth and waiting on confirmation for location. And, and asking if people have any time in upcoming meetings over the next six weeks, we would love to see if we can be there. And so that messaging is going out broadly. And if you have thoughts on who might receive that, please let us know. But we are looking at, you know, different political groups. We're looking at different groups that meet in our community. um, you know, different political groups, we're looking at, um, different groups that meet in our community, um, I have the senior center on here through the rec, um, and, you know, numerous nonprofits, things like that. So if you have thoughts on people that might like to get that message, please let me know and I'm happy to forward this email to them to, you know, if, if, if a group meets Wednesdays at ten and they have questions about the budget, we're happy to go be there. But I also want to hear from people, um, to, to remember Roy's point, what do you want from the school budget and, and do that work?
Member Bowden?
Thank you, I was going to say that, but I'm, I was also going to add in, um, that I did have a constituent reach out and kind of ask for a visual flow chart of what our Dingley building looks like, who's there, what their position is, sort of what you just asked for. And then also in our school, what administrators are in our schools, what level, like, like a visual chart of every single building in Lewiston Public Schools and who's employed there, doesn't necessarily need to be names, um, but position titles, like what do we have? And so, um, it is something I requested at like a week or two ago and followed up, um, with the superintendent today and he's working on it. He said as a part of our budget packet, so that is something that you will get to see and the public will get to see.
Where are you going to talk? Counselor Najin, did you still have something? Him first, Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, and this is where I upset a lot of people. Good at that, I'll be all over Facebook tonight, I'm sure. Um, I think we lost the budget last year and the first time around is strictly because teachers didn't vote. I've been in the school system, spent six years, if you'd have got the vote out, you'd have blew it away. I hear about constituents, a thousand people out of thirty-three thousand, give me a break. If we had seven or eight thousand people vote against something, that would say something. We went three times and didn't even have ten percent of the population of Lewiston vote. So if people want to say something, you know, put your vote where your mouth is, quite frankly. And I, I, I think personally, I'm glad you're doing what you're doing. I just think you all did a poor job of your staff and people who work here because I've worked in school systems and seen where the first one failed and next one was blown away because everybody who worked for the school went out and voted because they lived in that town. We didn't do that messaging. Is it too high? I'm for education, I don't think it's too high. I think there's programs that should be changed and things should be done differently. But I, you know, I always like this, my constituent and they don't like this, well, that ten people probably didn't vote, well, we can't prove that, but they, they're really good at talking up the game. So, you know, this year, all of our job is to get a decent budget to all of the city Lewiston people the best we can. Flatline or lower is what I'd like to see, but we know it's going to be tough to do, not just yours, ours as well. Um, with an evaluation coming next year, but the truth of the matter is, I love these naysayers, I get the emails all the time, I see them on Facebook beating me up, you know, half of them don't vote. Okay, they're just a voice and I'm not going to chase after a voice. I'm glad we're doing what you're doing, I hope people show up and give you good information on what they'd like to see. But I suspect if you didn't go knock on doors, no one's going to knock on yours, but I still think it's a good thing to do. Thank you.
Counselor Najin?
So I, I would also, uh, state that if we could keep the, uh, mill rate, um, the same, um, that would be great. But I will also point out that, uh, even today, um, all of, uh, the, the, the federal loan programs and, and funding pieces were frozen, right? We don't know what's going to happen in certain situations and, uh, as far as, and, as far as where some of these funding sources are going to come through. Um, but I would say also that, um, even if you don't vote on the school budget, if you're a constituent and you're paying taxes, there's concerns there. There are absolutely concerns in the community about what happens after the reeval happens and how much people can pay. Uh, and, and we have to represent all of those people. Um, so in that space, you know, I think working together, the school committee says this is what, you know, our minimum budget is. Uh, and that allows the, the municipal side to look at what we could also cover, you know? Because the truth is, it's, it's a finished product that we're both putting out, I'm not the expert on what the schools need, right? And the only thing I'm, I'm, I'm going to say is like, that number we can accommodate or that number we need to look at is a different number, right? Um, and, but there are pieces that we can move, uh, on the municipal side as well to give a full package to the city that doesn't get the school budget voted down and meets our minimum needs for, for the city on, on both sides.
Yes, Mayor, Julie?
Uh, yeah, no, thank you, everyone, um, there's just hard realities here, right? Um, you know, I, uh, there's no way that the budget can be flat because of all the step increases, uh, from the union contract. So like, i- if the budget is going to remain flat, we're, we're talking about, um, uh, layoffs at that point. Uh, and I can imagine that what you said, you were targeting a, a four percent increase or that's what we're currently tracking? Right, and, and probably the majority of that four percent are, um, staff increases, right? The step increases
Correct.
from staff contracts. And so, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's where we're at. Uh, and, and with a growing school population, uh, there's just, uh, there's not a lot of discretionary spending, um, happening. And, uh, I, I think we need to, to acknowledge that.
Member Bowden?
Thank you, um, so Counselor Glenn, I just wanted to say, um, I think a big reason why a lot of teachers didn't vote on the budget is because they don't actually live in Lewiston. And that was pretty apparent during budget season when they were coming out in droves to talk to us. I would say the majority that came to the mic, I'm a teacher in Lewiston, but I don't live in Lewiston. So, um, I think that's a reason why we don't get a teacher vote for our budget. I just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor Roy?
Just want to add this, uh, I can appreciate the town hall style. I would put that out on as many social media platforms as you can because, again, a lot of us are aware that we get a lot of, uh, people talking on social media about what we should do, what we shouldn't do and all that stuff. This way here, if you put it out on social media and they don't go, they're, it's their fault.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Counselor Najin?
I just have one question about, so do you, do we have a schedule that we can put out in order to show when our public meetings are going to happen as well as?
Basically every Monday and Wednesday for a month and a half straight.
No, but I'm talking about like the, with the outreach pieces and, and so like our work, one of the challenges that we run into is the workshops are one way, right? So there's not a lot of dialogue that comes in. And I think the educational component for us to tell people what's in that budget i- is incumbent on a conversation, right? And so like, I'm just asking for like, kind of like an outline of that we can match up with what we're going to do with the city as well so that people know their engagement points, how they can engage and, and as opposed to just sending one email to, you know, like, I'll get an email for the school committee that's not copied to, um, uh, the ward representative for the school committee, right? And, uh, talking to me about, uh, the school budget and it's, I don't make the school budget, you know what I mean? So like, the, having that, that communication piece where we have a clear outline of like, these are the things we're going to do at these times and this is the way, ways in which you can engage, I think will be super helpful, um, so that the last, I, I don't know if you remember when the last budget passed, but everyone's like, wait, you're going to vote on it? And then we voted on it and then that's when all the chaos rained, so, um, clear scheduling would be, that, that is out in the public would be helpful.
So the calendar of our meetings for the budget process are already public, um, on our website. We share the agendas and what topics we discuss at each of the particular budget meetings. Uh, we break it down by article typically and we go through the different schools and what have you. So I think we can do, um, a little better job sharing information out, but just so people, if they're watching right now, it's, it's available in our, in our school committee calendar already.
Member Bowden?
Thank you, sorry, I just have one last suggestion, um, if you're doing town halls and, and you're going out to speak to people like we spoke about. Um, I, I know you hate social media, but I actually, I know you're going to kill me for this.
I don't hate it, I just don't want to be a two-way, all-day, everything for Jake.
I think it would be, um, I think it would be really great, um, it would, you know, it would cover a lot of people if you did like a Facebook Live and took questions that were showing up in the comments and tried to answer them as they came through. I know, I know, you probably don't love that.
Being moderated in some way?
I know you don't love that.
That's the challenge is people can just log grenades all day long.
Well, you don't need to answer questions that are inappropriate or not on topic, but if someone has a legitimate question in the comments, like you can just, you know, kind of go through and answer, um, and it, and it gives an opportunity for people who can't make it out to a meeting or who don't know where you are, or, you know what I'm saying?
So we've used that in the past with the LexiKey platform, which is also a multilingual where people can submit questions, um, and, and we can see them come in. So I like that idea and it's multilingual. Yeah. I don't know about Facebook Live per se, but thanks.
A, a lot of times with social media, um, many of the people that we're getting comments from don't actually live in town. And so I, I think we need to focus on what our, what our Lewiston residents and, and voters are, are feeling and, uh, field questions from, uh, Tim Buck too.
Member Eames? I didn't know if there could, if it didn't have to be you, like maybe it could be somebody who loves it, who wants to be on social media, not necessarily Karen, but somebody, Tim, no. Somebody who, who's in the know, but also likes that kind of thing, because
I'll ask her.
Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, and I'm, I know we want to get out of here. Uh, my comment on that, if you decide to do something, I don't like that platform because everybody's got a weird name. You don't know if they're a real person, the guy signs on five times, asks the same question in different ways. So I'm not in favor of wasting the superintendent's time going down and watching a column full of questions. I've had to do that myself in the past, it's, I don't think it's productive whatsoever. If you want to do a Facebook video and post it, so people know what you're talking about or answer some, you know, be these questions came in and these are the answers I have, that might be a more productive way of doing it, you know? And, and then it could be sent out by all of us in here who have that meteor. You know, we got these ten questions in from people from Lewiston and you answer them and then that goes out or five at a time, that could be probably profitable. That way there is on a back and forth and people get the data. So I would offer that as a suggestion, vice, you having to go, who's JK five-one-three-four-one from Lewiston, you know? Thank you.
Um, I don't think it has to be done year-round, but that would be great if it was. I know that we've got public notification requirements, like it's in the Sun Journal when we have meetings and it goes out to City Hall, I think, and, um, but at the very least during budget season, putting the agenda on Facebook might be a good thing just because a lot of people only get their information from Facebook. And so if the agenda for the following week is out by like Thursday and says next week, we're going to be meeting Monday and Wednesday and we're going to be discussing this on Monday, we're going to be discussing this on Wednesday, it gives people a time to plan, so if it's something that's important to them, they can come out to the meeting or email ahead of time. Um, and then you don't have to worry about the back and forth so much and at least it's out there. Member Najin?
Just, just as many platforms as possible, right? Like the, the truth is, get the information, the, the, the tradition of like, you know, getting the paper, reading it and finding out everything that's going to happen, that doesn't happen anymore, right? And so there, there, people get their information from different sources, just get it out as much as possible and as many platforms as possible. And I would say the same for the city council as well, we, we, we need to be engaged, so.
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, I just wanted to thank the, uh, school committee and school staff for inviting us over here and, uh, welcoming us, welcoming us in such a warm fashion, thank you so much.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Seconded by, did you get any of that? All in favor? School committee is adjourned, thank you.